There's nobody doing plumbing. And as far as the other side of the fence, we're backed up at least until when they're pulling the plug in July. So I don't see avenues avenues to handle that at all.
So we'll keep you guys posted as we know on that. Friendship Day, like we said, is September the seventh. We're doing a DJ this year for the community vote versus the movie night. So that will be held on Main Street. We are going to basically DJ it ourselves. We have all the equipment from the band.
One head.
Yeah, Ethan is gonna donate the equipment and we're gonna have our junior members make the playlist and we'll approve that, make sure it's okay. And then they'll be doing the music that night.
If you guys have any strobe light or fog lights available. That we can borrow.
Anyone?
He's got one that balls with a twist.
Disco ball? Yeah, I got one from the disco night, so I'll bring that up there. Classics, Michael's gonna be donating the Polly carts. And he's gonna be working on a dump tank with my brother. So they're gonna be, and I think maybe Cory thought he would help too, so we'll get a dump tank donated.
So that you have one of your own for future use.
Not having to drag the Ravenwood to get out.
Yep.
For Friendship Day, Casey P and L, you guys kinda talked about that, is gonna be putting a pole up directly across, I think, right from City Hall?
Well, it's right at the corner of the sidewalk.
And Tim thankfully is going to help with putting the box up on that.
I guess I got going here.
Little Mike said he would be available if you need him.
And that way we're not having to run the incursion cord from behind.
The bank.
The bank.
Three.
No, we're not.
She said little Mike.
Little.
Well, it's not like you're.
Eagle Project, Matthew Lester is volunteering for an eagle project where he's gonna be putting a flag pole and a flag. And landscaping at Suma Park and then landscaping at Needhamir Park. And so we're looking into the kind of flag pole that we would like to get and it'll be right on the highway and Third Street there.
Then we're, we are controlling the flag, right?
Yes, there'll be a light on it and there will be.
No, no, I'm saying.
No, like that.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
No, what type of flag it is?
Oh, I, we'll have to purchase it, so.
Tim was recommending a telescopic.
They have a thirty foot telescopic flag pole. I'm just saying, what kind of flag's gonna go up on it? Is it gonna be an American flag?
Or.
Yes. Oh, Lord, that's all right, that's an easy question.
You went over my head.
Yeah, no kidding, I'm like, oh yeah.
We're gonna put a flag up.
Actually, I was gonna get one of my don't tread on me flags.
So as soon as that's approved by his eagle scout something, he'll get started on that. Oh, I didn't say that we're gonna have a, potentially have a petting zoo at Friendship Day.
With your approval.
With your approval.
And where's it gonna be and who cleans up the poo?
Well, we'll have to clean it up and it'll be located.
Kind of on the street over in front of the flower mill.
And they'll be putting hay down.
And they have a drop cloth too, which will help.
So why don't we, why don't we just get Doctor, whichever one's in charge now, to let us put it in the grass?
We thought about that, but we figured they probably didn't wanna pick up poo.
It's easier to pick it up on the drop cloth.
Correct.
Well, the drop cloth can go on grass too.
But that's where the slide goes.
Well, the company from Rockport, it's on grass. They like the grass to be open so that animals can eat the grass.
Yeah, so that's why we're doing, we wanted it on the street, but just let the animals eat. We have to get your approval for that.
Most animals do it in grass.
They do have the appropriate life insurance.
But we can use the fire department to hose the streets down.
There you go. They'll already be there anyway, so.
There you go.
Who's paying for the water?
You.
Me.
Scott.
Scott's gonna pay.
Yeah.
Do we need your guys' approval for that or are we gonna deliver on that?
I don't have, my thoughts are is.
It's part of your friendship day.
Yeah, it's part of your friendship day.
Violating any of our ordinances, I'm okay with it as long as you clean it up.
Well, you do have ordinances about animals, but I didn't get in the green on them.
We have ordinances about animals living inside the city limits.
So we're good for just a day.
First, they can come in town and do anything, yeah, you're good.
Thank you.
Rory is donating money in a grant and some new playground equipment, so we will be getting some new playground equipment. We're possibly looking at rescheduling the Doug Suma five K. Becky's gonna help. Well, and that, the entire Suma family can't be here, which is like fifty people and that's a lot. So that is a potential. The biggest thing, oh no, wait, the movie night, the next one is June first, it's at the Ball Field. And we're watching San Mott and Heidi is having a concession stand for that. And.
What?
Yeah, that, no, that's what I was saving, saving that for last. So, and the biggest thing is we purchased an Aqua Klein for the city pool, which will be here hopefully by the end of the week. And be installed on Monday or Tuesday. We saved three thousand dollars to install it because we're having Chris, Jessie, Shane and Jamie help Todd Fog with that. So it decreases the price by three thousand dollars to install that. And it will be actually what you're talking about where it's gonna be at in the.
It is actually going to be, I'm thinking my directions, on the east side of the pool, east of the diving board. It's gonna be roped off. So those on the east side will go to the ladder on the east side, those on the diving board will go to the other.
Basically in the hole where the old big board used to.
Yes, it's gonna be on the east side, but that is the area that they'll jump into where the high dive used to be.
You'll have another lifeguard there all the time.
We're having a dedicated lifeguard, we're adding a lifeguard to the rotation, which we know is going to increase our expenses, but it will help with safety. It's not required by law.
Five all the time now.
Correct.
So.
Four in the water, the water's in that.
Yeah, and they're gonna direct all the traffic in and out.
That was our big purchase for the year. We thought this would be a great purchase and an attraction to our pool. You guys have any questions first?
I only have a couple. And basically they're geared at Chris. So this, this fault or crack or whatever it was, this is something that couldn't have been found prior to the water going in, right? You didn't inspect anything or?
Well, I went through, but obviously it's on the backside where it's dark like that until I went down there this morning after we got the water turned on. Had someone running through just to see what we were gonna do. And this morning I seen it trickle it out and I saw that on the back, just tried to figure out where it was at.
There's enough distance enough to put your head back there and do a.
Yeah, I've been, I've been down in that hole before.
We probably need to turn the water on before we're getting ready to fill it to see if things are.
And my, my next question to that is, is when you put it down for the winter, you blow those lines out with compressor?
Yeah, everything's, all the drains and everything, we don't have compressed air up there, anywhere to get it up there. But all the drains are open. Down to there, so all the drains out when they shut the water off.
I, we should run some antifreeze.
I would think, I would think we'd even, that's probably not gonna work with, with people going in the water afterwards.
I'm saying, I'm saying when we shut it down for the winter, nobody's gonna be going in.
I don't know how you flush the glucose out of it. It'd have to be a specific type of like RV antifreeze or something. I don't, I don't know, we could look into it, but my question would be, there's ways that you can, a portable air compressor will pressurize those lines. It might need to be looked into because I think this is not the first time that something has broke in there because the water didn't drain out correctly. So that might be something for your long range plan to look and see. It's all it's gonna do is save you some time. The thing with the chemicals, those need to, it, it, it shouldn't be a problem as far as funding is concerned. That stuff should be ordered sixty to ninety days before you think you're gonna use it so that it's here. That shouldn't be an issue. Once you start dumping water in it, you should already have that stuff available. I don't, I don't see why you couldn't have. It needs to be there ahead of time. It's a yearly thing, you know what you gotta have, so just put that in your plan on bringing the thing up online early. Okay. Animal control, we got any critters? Have we had any critters?
We had three dogs, they're half week or so. One of them, I mean, there was an issue with that. They said on the vet page, it has a pit bull mix like that, but it wasn't. Something like that, just what the dog, the vet just looked at it from, from a picture I took, oh, that's pit bull. He got documentation from the original owner, but it wasn't. They got that squared away and he paid firework to get it out. And it had pride gramps, dogs, and he's been gone for.
Dialysis.
Dialysis, like that, they gone, they got it out. I just took it down the pound, had it down there. Somebody got old Maverick Adams like that and she talked to somebody or they were just uh, paid whatever to get him out. Something like that, gave it back cause he's been gone like three days in a row, like out in Kansas City, something like that, got it. They had it at home. Like that, they fixed the pens, put everything all the way around there so he hasn't got it out. Only issue I have, only Becky knows, she gave me the message today about Nellie Campbell, her big, great day. You know, yesterday, she was taking her for a walk, got up by Craig Van Hamsen's house. And their dogs come out of the house and attacked her dog. Like that, like that. And she did, I mean, I talked to my wife, well, they're Casey, she said, well, you need to go to City Hall or get hold of something like that. So she called Becky and they got her number and I called her about it. I guess she's had to take the dog out the vet already, so I don't know, I don't know, give it Tyson when he got on earlier, but about what we do. About the dogs going out the house and attacking that dog in the room. Did it let out or did it just, it broke out? I guess they were, I don't know, somehow, I don't think they were there. She says she didn't see any Laura or anybody there. I remember the door was shut and took off out the house and had her dog.
We do have a ordinance for that, don't we Tyson?
It's at large, but it requires intent for the dog to be at large, so. What's the, what's the licensing aspect for the, of the dog's license?
I'm not sure, I'll.
The number one thing I usually do after when I have an incident like that is checking in on the dogs to see if they're licensed by the owners. And making sure that they're shots or they're worth the part too. That's usually the first place I go. In that situation, that's probably the only may have fatigue at this time, so.
We could be vicious.
That's the thing too, documented. I think that's the only documented incident right now is that one where.
But see, yeah, and you gotta get more than one before you can deem it vicious.
Yeah, and two, I don't know where her dog was, is it in the yard? Just on the street, just walked, she's walking up the street.
I thought she said.
At Central High School.
I thought she said somebody was at the door and the dog's burtled out.
I could have Laura or something like that, I don't know.
See, then that's different, if she let the dogs out to do their business and didn't have them on a leash, then.
Yes.
She's culpable for septication with the whole.
Well, I'd be letting.
Permitting the dog.
Perfectly clear is that's a kid walking to school, that dog comes out of there like that. Yeah, that's not gonna be good.
No, cause the kids really do, which you know that, but they walk that street coming and going every day.
But this is the first documented incident, so it's not likely.
Usually, usually you have to get at least two.
Well, keep your ears and eyes open, so let's see what happens. I would say that's probably the only way to proceed forward with that at this, at this point in time. I have been, I have gotten several calls in the last couple of weeks. One of them actually I got while I was in Florida, which really, I don't, it doesn't really matter, but I was about two thirds of the way into the bag when I got the call. They were complaining about coons and coyotes. And it's all on the south side of town. So just heads up to the police, exterminators, the hit squad, whatever you wanna call them. And you guys, and it might be who, you to maybe in some of those places where the south side of town has some more dilapidated than other buildings. Maybe put a live trap or two out and see if we can't get some of the coons.
There was a coon in my neighbor's yard the other night. Just coons that live in the trees right in front of your yard.
Yeah, well, I'm just saying, there's, there's, it's starting to get summertime and people are gonna be out later at night. They're gonna start seeing them and it's.
The easiest thing would get people to clean this. Clean the stuff out of there, yeah, see, I caught myself. And, and not leave, you know.
Yeah, stuff that would be edible.
That would be edible, you know, but that would make too much sense.
Anyway, keep your head up for that one too, because they have been, and evidently there's, there's a bunch of coyotes coming into town again.
Yeah, my neighbor's dog got killed by one this last, last week.
Okay, you can't prove it.
Chief, you're up.
I can't.
If I have any questions on the numbers, they were a lot higher this month than they were in the previous month. A lot more murder cases, active one that's on, it says robbery, that's actually a robbery suspect. Having the interstate law, I started caddying at an armed robbery carjacking about last week of April. It ended up in Tarkio, I guess he was at Casey's at one point.
You stopped getting there.
Technically, you were able to buy a piece of pizza and then left. Got, got in the stolen car and continued south. We, we tried to locate him, but we're about twenty minutes behind the GPS ping. National Drug Tank Bank was April twenty seventh. We turned in four boxes of approximately a hundred and twenty pounds of prescription drugs and other the counter medication that was turned in to the city. We collect year round, you know, people bring it all the time. In fact, we already got one box started and it's probably about half full already. But the total statewide for the state of Missouri during this campaign was twenty nine tons of RX medications, so. And this was the neviest year.
Needles.
It's almost sixty thousand.
The neviest year was twenty sixteen, it was thirty two, thirty two tons of prescription medication. And we even, we separate the needles out now, because needles is a whole other shoot and match, so.
Right, but I'm saying we do, we do take needles.
Yeah, we take the, the.
Diabetic needles, not meth needles.
As long as it's needle.
Tell the difference, yeah.
Of course, warmer weather, we wrote incident, I have quite a few notices for nuisance violations regarding vehicles to start with. The, the second wave of, of other violations will be coming here in the next few weeks. Yes, I mean.
I wanna, I wanna give your department a kudos because, Blue, you gotta hear this. Because for the first time in my life since I've been back, I knew somebody that you guys wrote a ticket to or a letter to. And they got it cleaned up within the seven days. And I was impressed.
Good, congrats.
A lot of them got.
I'm not saying they don't, I'm just saying it's for once, I seen they actually came in and knocked the garage down, loaded it all up and flattened out the ground and everything.
I'm thinking they've kinda realized that we're not gonna play the game anymore.
Well, I think they're getting the, the idea that Blue's on the council, so.
It's never worked before. Hey, do you know, I know Adam's, Adam's not here, but. The place where we were working up on the highway, do we know, do you know what's going on with that, the trailer?
They paid a fine.
They had a fine.
Yeah.
And they did clean some of it up, but they didn't even get it off.
I think they're gonna get another revisit.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I mean, there's.
His, his next visit, he's training two weeks, so when he gets done with that, he'll.
Okay, that's fine. I wanted to just ask him, cause I know he's been working on it, that's why, but it's a hot mess.
And he is supposed to qualify tomorrow, correct?
Yes, he qualifies and certifies tomorrow with Void on N R S and whatnot. And Friday he has his qualification certifications for his tracking. I'll cover that here in a second.
What's the dog's name?
Void. It's really Floyd, Brock Tario, but that's shortened it down to a single silver haired void. Just for the dogs, that's for the dog's sake.
You sure he's not gonna feel like, kinda put behind the eight ball because he's a big empty spot? His name is the Big Empty Spot?
Yeah, he's just a big empty spot. Watch out for Void. We, we had him out last Friday night up there and working with him, we did some tracks up it, we used the pool because of the concrete. And he's kinda good. I mean, after you get to kind of know the dog, he's kind of just a goober. When he's not working, when he's, when he's there to meet people, he just kinda gets silly.
He does.
Yeah, he's just good.
But he's a puppy.
Yeah, he's a puppy.
He's young.
He still has it.
He, he shows no aggression at all. I had his, I had his toy and I was holding it and he jumped up and took the toy out of my hand and never once put a tooth towards me or anything, just perfect, took it and it was his.
That's one thing you don't do is go, oh, where's his toy? You don't do it like this, cause he might try to take the back of your hand off.
Cause his toy, his toy is his reward for doing good, so.
He has a drive that is huge. He, he'll be an animal.
That's, that's good. I'm, I'm glad we have that asset.
We did a, just a, just a simple walk, a walk of the car, not necessarily search, we just simply running it down the side of the car. And he's very agile, very quick. And when he's given that directive to, to move that car, to move along that car, he's very good. He works the up and down and, and everything like he should, so.
But he literally puts his head in behind the tire.
Yeah.
Cause it's a lot of dogs, you don't see that, but due to his size, he, he goes in behind the tires and.
Cool. Yeah, he did that on the back tire on the, the truck, we're like, oh, that's cool. It's like he stuck his nose in it and ran the tire.
Yeah.
So, yeah, he's very good, so.
Does the, I already know the answer to this, but I'm just asking. LE, assist LE, is that like the county?
Or any other agency.
Okay, that's, I figured.
Rockport County, yes. Of course. Got the, the new patrol car in, it is on the road and running, we had it up and running within forty eight minutes, getting it here. And it's got its first round of stickers on it, cause that's the name already had then. Another thing is, and this is not any guys' shoot, I just found this out today. On July twentieth, there's gonna be Midwest Mess, it's gonna be in town.
That's that rock concert thing that what's his name?
It happens out in Watson, yeah, it's gonna be here at the Community Building.
Do what? They're gonna do it at the Community Building?
Yeah, you know what it's all about, I've never.
Yeah, I've only went to two stabbings in the last five years.
So that's gonna be an all nighter for us.
Well, to be honest with you, that night you need to maybe talk to your county sheriff and see if we could possibly have a deputy that's not at home sleeping and out. Because there has not been a time, I mean, I literally have went to stabbings every, and the last time, the guy stabbed two guys. I stabbed the one guy in the butt and they held him down and waited for the cops to come. But, I mean, these guys.
There was a rape too that came out of there.
Yeah, there was a rape that came out, I don't really think that we want that in our town.
Do you guys serve, or do they serve alcohol there?
Oh, yeah.
Like serve it though?
Oh, yeah.
Because they should have to go through you guys for a permit.
As they, they have.
Well, I'm telling you right now, I, I, if it was up to me to make the decision, I would vote that it'd be better, let it go to Rockport. Or do it in Fire Facts, cause there ain't no cops, so.
So what was the freaking deal? He rented the community building, is what you're telling me? So this whole thing is, he's charging, right? It's not a free.
Yeah, he charges.
There's fees, there's tickets, they sell it.
Okay, so my question is.
But I think they serve beers, is what I'm saying. I think they pay, have somebody and you pay for beers, so they shouldn't have to go through you guys.
They still have to get their liquor license and so on and so forth.
Right.
We probably need to know more about that.
I'll trip with them, see if they do the serving. They didn't say anything about alcohol.
I'm pretty certain they do serve at their.
Well, if they.
They don't serve. Bring your own, it's basically no government wedding, you know.
That's what I thought.
But I understand your point.
Well, I will.
Insurance too, I mean, it's gonna have to have the insurance.
Is there an occupancy limit at the building, for that building? They're gonna get a park. Those are all throughout.
They'll use, they'll use the backstage thing, back patio as their stage for the band. Cause their bands that they got are way too.
No coolers, drink tickets available, they should have to go through you guys. Well, he didn't say anything about that.
Okay, well, we probably need to get back in touch with him because.
Well, they gotta have that thing for the parks if they're. Here's the link though, like we said about the size of the, and the amount of people, again, that's a violation of the alcohol being in the park. And I know how that thing's been in the past, it's people at floodgates. So that's, that needs to be appointed to them, they need to be able to fix that and control that situation.
I told you their band was gonna be inside, I don't know.
I mean, maybe, maybe a part of them inside, but I know last time.
Wednesday night, Ashley?
July twentieth. There's about a lot of people at that one.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a lot of people to go to that.
Okay.
There's eight hundred and seventy seven people going or.
I don't know if the occupancy of that building is big enough.
I thought me and you looked that up and it was like four hundred or something according to Fire.
Well, we had a planning accordingly for it.
I don't know if I'm looking it up, you might have.
We'll bring it to our next thing. I have a gentleman that's interested in doing the reserve with us, unpaid reserve.
I don't know where I would've found that information.
Andy Maynor, it's David Glidden.
We have two hundred.
He's a tow truck driver right now with Benny Fields.
He's a junior.
He's the junior, the two. But he's interested in doing, you know, putting in for reserve with us, assisting whatever and whatnot.
To fill in.
He's not even worried about getting paid, he just wants somebody, he wants to be able to continue to keep up his post and whatnot. And would, would likely help us with this situation as well. And I'd love to go ahead and get approval for him for the unpaid reserve spot as well for now. Do we can figure out what's going on with this Midwest Mess thing?
I actually wanna put a hold on this Midwest Mess till we get some more information from them. Cause they may deny us, I mean, it may be in our best interest to deny it.
I'm, I'm telling you, that's, it's, they've always had it out on this little place.
Yeah, it's out on B B, it's Barnard's old place.
Yeah, well, I can't think of.
Panico.
Panico. Justin Panico runs it. And, and there's been, I kid you not, there's been rapes, there's been friggin' stabbings, I mean, it's just.
It's on, as far as I'm concerned, it's on hold until we get more information.
Well, like I said, it's still put them as a reserve unpaid still. It depends, depends upon what's just going to be there. Looking something else later.
Yeah, I don't, anybody have a?
Anybody have a problem with David Glidden becoming an unpaid reserve officer?
I don't know, I feel like something would be.
I know the guy, he's, he's worked in Holt County, he's worked down in Andrew County, he's not in law enforcement now, just for the simple fact that he has a family. Uh, he's quite, paid quite a bit more for just simply towing.
Just go through the whole, any other employee would need the drug test, the.
Yes.
And all that.
Well, he's not gonna be working as a paid.
It doesn't matter, we're putting a gun on his, on his body, he's, he's gonna get a pissed ass.
Vehicle, yeah.
Yeah, he'll have to get a pissed ass.
That's fine, we can, we can set that up as well.
I mean, I, I know him, his brother's the head investigator over at Maryville. His dad was.
Ryan Glidden?
Ryan's brother. Yes.
Yes. And then you got, what's the one that's getting ready to go down to Florida?
Mike, and he even worked in Florida. I presented his information to you guys and sent it to you in an email. He did give me the resume for the, for the position and whatnot.
I, yeah, I mean, I, we have executive on, I mean, I think that goes.
Yeah, that's fine.
And I find I'm open today. But it might not last long. But it's open for now, so that should slow down the traffic. I sent an email to Amy Dallas to go ahead and pick up the trailer for now.
Thanks.
Thank you.
That's it.
Are you gonna bring up your, are you gonna bring up your stencils for your vehicle?
Uh, not this time, not until I get some quotes back, I haven't got any quotes. I, I, what my plan is and what I like to do depend upon how gross it is, if, you know, I, I don't know how much this is gonna be. But with, other than like the badge that's already on the truck, putting the word police down the side of it, but having it in the graphics. It's in the background, it'll be the American flag, we'll be in the background. Right now, waiting on some quotes for those, but it'll, it'll be the next meeting before I get anything.
If anybody happened to watch Fox News or it was actually a big item, his, his graphic is, it was taken from that Laguna Beach thing and, and. Thing where they shredded white blue police, they thought, they thought it was.
Yeah.
The, the pansies think it was too aggressive and it looks pretty sharp, I, I think it looks really sharp, but.
Well, they have like two or three different variations of it. And all it is, is like you said, it's the back, background of an American flag with police written on it, so. You're always gonna offend somebody, so let's see.
Anything else, Chief?
That's it.
I don't have anything other than what we've already discussed and what we're going to discuss.
Yes, sir.
Tim O'Derrick is in town, the big house is all, when I drove down here, the big house is almost gone. And his minions were ripping shit out of the whole library, I don't know what they were getting, but. So, all right, building inspector is not here.
It's his brother.
There was two, there was two guys, I don't know who they were. I just said minion, cause I figured he was probably being employed. I just said minion, cause I figured he was probably being employed. Becky, financials?
You wanna have any questions on financials?
Yes, we do, the airport, the sure.
Say again?
The sure health under airport, it's eleven hundred fifty nine.
Flood insurance?
Oh, well, we don't, we buy flood insurance under health?
That's just the name of the company I typed in, you bet it.
You gotta have it out there.
I might have. Let me look, I might have posted it on the roll one.
No, I just, I'm just, it's just curious. It's in the sure health.
I know, I saw it on there and I thought, what?
We don't have this.
No, I thought, oh, that's a flood.
And when are we gonna get any?
I did, I posted it on the roll one. Should be American. Thank you.
See, we do pay.
I make a motion when you accept the bills, after she makes the correction and pays the right company.
You jumping before we're even there.
What do you mean, over there?
We're there.
Never even talked about that.
No, we're not. We're talking about financials.
That's what I said.
You jumped down to nine, it's numbered.
Oh, yes, I, I, I accept the financials.
Okay, so, we're on. Um, July twenty third, twenty eighth, the Merma Annual Conference that City needs to send somebody to that I've gone to for years. I have Debbie lined up and Kim planned another event, so she can watch the city hall. So I mentioned it to Blue, but she thought that maybe.
I would spend too much time in Margaritaville.
I'm sure, not what I said.
I'm joking, I did say that, I was joking.
Then you can go steal the ball and break it.
I told her she invited a replacement and I could get to the conference.
Oh, mayor told me to put it on the attendance, oh, here it is.
Yeah.
I did have, Debbie did say that her sister Nan step would be interesting at sitting, at city hall.
You got, you got more vacation?
Do I? This is not vacation, this is a meeting, and do you wanna know?
Yeah, I said I'd go, she couldn't find a replacement.
I don't have to.
I'm gonna tell you right now.
We need to be last ditch effort.
You know what, bottom line is, with as much work as going on around here. You go, we'll put somebody in here to answer the phone, they can't.
Well, I think also.
Just make sure you pre-sign checks and stuff, make, make it longer gone.
I do think we need to kinda think about that kinda stuff though, because. I, I know we have a backup in Debbie, but it, we, we need to have some backups, cause Debbie isn't always gonna be able to help us. And Becky, no offense, but she's gonna retire eventually.
Yes, she's not.
We do need to be thinking about that kinda stuff.
Yes, you are.
Yeah, you caught yourself.
I have no idea.
Yeah, you do. You're gonna say the old word. You notice, you notice how her eyes both went up, it's alright.
But I do think that, except like when you emailed me the other day, I thought, really? We, Debbie's about the only person that could come in here and man the place. We need to have some type of a backup, cause I sure as heck can't. I mean, I can answer the phone, but I can't do it more than that.
Well, nobody can, because the bottom line is, we got it locked up like Fort Knox, and we kinda like it that way.
I know, but.
That way we don't misplace stuff and lose stuff.
Yes. So it might be something to think of.
Okay.
So. If Nan will do it, I think it's fine.
You guys have a preference of food or water, just find some, any of you wanna go?
No, I do not wanna go. Yeah. Send Blue.
If you can't find a replacement, I can go. Is that fun, babysitter for a week?
Well, if you look in here, it tells you what you can eat on your route, where you can stay.
How much to.
How much your allowance is spent. It's right in here.
Be quiet, come on.
They always have, they always have a hospitality room, that's why we never get any phone calls from Becky for three days.
But I think you can, I think Nan's okay if she'll do it, Nan's not really go.
Where's that?
Like those, aren't the new Marg, new Margaritaville down there?
Okay.
And then we got a request for a home occupation, uh, business. Uh, Beth Jones and Paul Seaman, uh, for catering, and uh, that will be on the agenda with the public hearing next month. So I was giving a heads up, so.
So they're just asking.
They're adding, they're adding on to their kitchen so that he can cater out of their home. And my opinion to that is basically, we're gonna do the public hearing thing, but it's not even gonna be.
I don't think so.
Part of daycare.
I do have, I do have something I forgot about earlier, um, it was sitting right here in front of me, cause I wouldn't be paying that any attention. Uh, last month, when we had our little, uh, discussion about dropping a load of gravel down in front of Legion. It took one load and it did extremely well, the girls down there were just tickled to death. Uh, we also got a thank you note from the park board. So if anybody wants, wants to read it, they've signed it, it's all pretty cool. I have not gotten a bill sent to Legion yet. Okay, I have a, I have a meeting next week.
Next Tuesday.
Tuesday night, I need to have that available by the, so that we can get it paid. The girls, the auxiliary is paying half, and Legion is paying half, and they're just, everybody's tickled to death except for Dicky Partial, and I don't listen to him most of the time anyway.
And we thank you again.
And we are gonna put gravel in front of, um, the dog pound, we just don't know what size yet.
Road's going up.
Uh, so that parking area.
Or the big rut stock?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, the bottom line is, you wanna have somebody blade that before we put it down.
That's if Jamie can remember how to run the road grader.
I can get Brady to do it.
Yeah, that'll work.
And I wanted to add one thing, we are gonna do pool audits again this summer.
And he'll tell you what.
We did that last year. For our insurance. If you hear that.
Abort or do part, their part, they're gonna do part order too. To be pretty abort or do their part.
Well, you got, you called and checked on prices of gravel and stuff, right?
The boys. The boys on our board know what they're talking about, and they want bigger gravel.
They want inch and a.
Quarter, inch and a half.
You don't want inch and a quarter, you don't want inch and a half, no.
They, they.
The boys on your board though, is what I'm saying, did, did they call somebody to?
We haven't approved it yet, we have to wait for it, yeah.
And Jamie got the one inch quote, not the other quote.
Cause now we decided they, or now, now, now.
To be honest with you, I don't.
Call Randy Freeman, we've been putting, uh, patch rock down on roads, I think it's an inch and a quarter, he'll know the price of everything.
Who do you get that from?
They get it from Mate with Bleak, cause it's the cheapest place to get it.
Plus, it's also better, better grade, there's not much dirt in it.
We also are gonna have a raffle that we're planning on running at the pool. And at the rodeo, and draw at Friendship Day. Um, our big gift, we're purchasing a, a gift certificate to Great Wolf Lodge for a family suite. And there's gonna be a gift card to Great Wolf Lodge to, uh, four hundred and ninety nine dollars.
Great Wolf Lodge is donating that four hundred and ninety nine dollars to us, so.
Okay, so.
So we're reaching out to.
Rodeo ground, you have run this by the rodeo board?
I talked to Flea today, he's in the process.
So it's not a them deal yet?
No, I, we're bargaining with him, I told him we can run the booth for his cow roping game. And he could have that money.
That's between you and him, I don't wanna know nothing about it.
If we could have a raffle there too.
Okay. All right, anybody got anything else?
Take a break.